Reverend Dr. Douglas Dent will lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Invite you to pray with me if you will. Almighty and merciful God, as we gather this evening for the city council meeting, we humbly come before you seeking your wisdom and guidance in the important decisions we'll make on behalf of this community. Help us to clearly understand the issues before us, to weigh all perspectives with fairness, and to choose paths that best serve the needs of our citizens. May our discussions be respectful and collaborative, allowing for diverse viewpoints to be heard and considered with an open heart and an open mind. Remind us of the people we represent, their hopes, their struggles, their aspirations, and guide our actions to reflect a genuine care for this community. As we deliberate, lead us with honesty and accountability, ensuring our decisions are made with the highest ethical standards. We ask your blessing on our community, safeguard its residents, and promote its peace and prosperity. We thank you for the privilege of serving our city and ask that your presence be with us tonight throughout this meeting. This we ask, this we pray, in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Doug. And for those of you who don't know, Doug is one of my closest friends. He's the pastor of the church that I go, he married, belonged to, he married my wife and I. And over the last eight years, I've relied on Doug a lot. I've asked him a lot of advice, and when there's been special events for the city, he's often been the one that has presided and provided an invocation. So for that, I thank you Doug for everything. So welcome everyone, happy new year. Tonight is a night that we look forward with joy and optimism as we look to the next chapter in the story of our city. But before we do so, our charter tells us that we recognize the service and the contributions. First, before we do that, we're going to call the meeting to order, one last time. Roll call please. Yes, yes.
Here.
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 Here. Here. We have a quorum, so, thank you Andrew. One last time, he's going to correct me, one last time. But yes, so tonight, we will look forward to the next chapter in the community's story. But before we do so, the charter tells us that we, tonight's the night that we recognize the contributions and service of those outgoing council members. So tonight, we have one council member who is retiring after eight years of service. And I just want to say, I remember a phone call I received in the summer of 2016. It was from someone who, at the time, I did not know well. But that gentleman informed me that he was considering running for city council in Ward Two. And he wanted to make his community better, but before he committed to running, he wanted to make sure that it was the best decision for his family. So he asked if he and his wife Christie could come over and talk to my wife, Tessa, and myself. And I remember the conversation we had on the couch at 612 East Vernon Avenue. And he talked about how he wanted to improve his community, he talked about the things that he wanted to do, the projects that he wanted to see happen. But again, he wanted to make sure that it was the right thing for him and his family. He had three young kids and that was important to him. And when I think back to that conversation, everything I ever need to know about Tom Ruffe, he told me right there in that conversation. By including his wife, and by including my wife, and by thinking about his family first. So today, I'm fortunate to consider Tom and Christie as among Tessa and I's closest friends. It's been a real pleasure and an honor to serve with you over the last eight years, Tom. And when I think about the progress and the projects and the positivity of this community, you've been at the center for the last eight years. You also keep things interesting. And I'm very glad that you brought that Hawaiian shirt out of retirement one last time. Tom, thanks for everything you've done for the city of Fergus Falls. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you Ben. And I can say the same about you. It's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you. And the city is extremely fortunate because I've heard from several people that kind of watch from the outside that, well, and I'll tell one of my favorite stories of a gentleman, I was out putting up a yard sign in 2020, I think. And a gentleman was out surveying for a construction project, and we just happened to bump into each other on somebody's front lawn and shook hands. And he said, you know, I've, he said, I don't live in town, but if I did, I would vote for you. And it's because we've seen more growth and forward progress in Fergus Falls in the last four years than we did in the 40 years before that. Somebody wants to start the party early. Yeah, I mean, and that sums it up. I mean, I'm very, very proud of what we've accomplished. We've gotten, with the help of, you know, most every council member that I've worked with, we've gotten great things done for the people of Fergus Falls. And that is always and will continue to be my number one priority, is just making the city a better place. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to make that impact, and I'm very proud of what we've done. But the people of Fergus Falls are fortunate to have had Ben as their mayor and as the leader of our city. It's been very frustrating to me over the last two years to have to listen to people come up and and make salacious unfounded accusations and just say nasty things about a man who, he poured his heart and soul into this city and spent, you know, countless hours and days and late nights, you know, worrying about things on behalf of the people of Fergus Falls. And I mean, Mayor Ben, he gave everything to the city. And I really hope that the residents understand that and appreciate that. Ben has two more kids than I do, which is just a ridiculous number of kids. And, you know, so he's got plenty of other stuff going on. And, but yet, he took his time to make the city a better place. So can we get a round of applause for Mayor Shire? And, you know, and there's, there's a lot of things that I was going to say tonight, but I'm not going to. But the thing that I really want to leave everyone in this room with, and leave the new council with, and leave the residents of Fergus Falls with is, is everyone needs to understand and appreciate the resource we have in our city staff. Our city staff are, it's a staff of experts and professionals in their field that, again, they're people that, that their goal is to make this city a better place. And they are, come on, seriously?
There's an off button on there.
At all. My kid wants to be picked up from hockey or something. But the staff is a, is a resource. They are an asset that I feel is often underappreciated. And the staff also needs to be, you know, treated with the utmost of respect. Andrew has a great team of people that he does a great job of managing. I've been very proud and very fortunate to have served, you know, in the trenches with the staff. And everyone in Fergus Falls should make sure that our city staff is being treated with the respect that they deserve and that their opinions are valued because they are experts in their field. And that's, you know, and I would just like to say a thank you to all of the council members that I've served with, some of which are some former council members who've joined us tonight. It's, you know, the first six years I was on the council was, was an absolute joy. Last two have been, yeah, a little trying sometimes. And I, for the new council, I would just hope that you would take a direction of collaboration and cooperation and positivity, which we haven't had too much of, it didn't seem like, for the last few years. And, but it's been a pleasure to serve. Thank you to the voters of Ward Two for putting your faith in me. And I, I wish all the luck to the new council and to the residents, and hopefully they get what they voted for. And we keep the city moving forward in a responsibly progressive way. So, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Tom. I just want to real briefly just echo your sentiments about staff. And just give a sincere thank you to Andrew, to Bill, Lynn, Clara, Guy, Brian, Gail, Mike, Chief Muckaw, Chief Bergren. I don't think I'm forgetting any of the department heads, but to all the city staff, it's been a real pleasure to serve with you over the last eight years. Elected officials come and go, but city staffs, they're the ones that make this city move forward every day. They're the dedicated professionals, and this city is better because of you. And Andrew, you lead a great team, and it's been, it's just been a real pleasure to work with you over the last eight years. Thank you for everything. Also, to my successor, Anthony, best of luck. I'll be rooting for you. Good luck to you. You know, I've often said that with the exception of being a husband and a father, there's nothing I've done in my life that's as rewarding as earning the trust of your neighbors to serve as an elected official in your community. And I'm feeling that tonight. You know, I've also said that there is no better job in the world than being the mayor of the town that you love, and I'm feeling that tonight. So I guess I would just like to say to the people of Fergus Falls, thanks for the honor of a lifetime. And with that, adjourned, sign of dying.
Good evening and welcome. This is the second part of this January 6th City of Fergus Falls Council meeting. I will call the meeting to order. And then the first portion of this agenda is to the swearing in ceremony of myself and council members Jim Fish, Mark Leighton, Mike Mortensen, and Laurel Kildee, if they would care to step down so that Rolfe can move his part.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Anthony Higginson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Fergus Falls.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Fergus Falls.
I will, uh, I'll perform faithfully perform that discharge my duties.
I will faithfully perform and discharge my duties.
As city council member or mayor, whichever that position is.
As city council member.
Okay. To the City of Fergus Falls, State of Minnesota.
To the City of Fergus Falls, State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You may now assume my seat.
You didn't switch chairs right now, did you?
He's probably switched.
He's threatening.
So, we need to repeat the roll call, if we could please.
Yes. Yes.
Here.
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 Here. Here.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the open forum. If there's anybody on the floor that wishes to speak, please come forward. Just state your name.
Lori Mullin, 2840 Lakewood Drive. Congratulations to our new members tonight. Just something that the city council may not know, but the country inn and suites is for sale. And I talked with the listing agent this afternoon. And I know that there was some discussion by the council during the budget process that maybe you wanted to look at what that asset would provide the city. So I'm thinking that maybe it'd be time for our council to reevaluate that asset. And that would be a good time to do it in the next couple of weeks. So add that to your many lists of things to do. Thank you.
Thank you Lori. I know, I think one or two council members were aware, but thank you very much for bringing up this subject matter. And I think that's something that we will definitely pursue. Does anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything on the agenda that they would wish to discuss? Would somebody like to care to make a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you Jim.
One thing, Councilmember Mortensen requested item number three to be removed from the consent agenda.
Jim, would that still hold that you would make the motion?
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same saying, hearing nothing, motion is approved. Do we have any public hearings this evening? There are no bids to award, there are no petitions and communications. There are five items remaining on the consent agenda, which I believe will be posted shortly for those in the room to see. If not, the items are the approval of the minutes for December 16th, motion approving licenses, resolution designating 2025 deposit rates, resolution delegating the city administrator, the finance director, the assistant finance director, payroll officer, and human resource director the authority to make the 2025 electronic fund transfers on behalf of the City of Fergus Falls, and a resolution approving budget adjustments. Do we have a?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you Scott.
I'll second that.
And thank you Lori. All those in favor say aye, or is it a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mortensen, you requested that the resolution designating the Daily Journal as a 2025 legal publication be pulled. Would you care to talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it very, very much. One of the things that I guess I want the residents to know, that whenever I come to make a vote, or I make a motion, or I do something like that, that I want to make sure that I am absolutely confident in what I'm doing. And one of the things that would be a very normal, very easy thing to do is place the Daily Journal as the official publication of the city. But we're in historic times with the Daily Journal. The Daily Journal has changed considerably here January 1st of 2025. And one of the things that I want to make sure that I'm doing right for the constituents of this city is making sure that they are still a legal publication. And so I want to have this discussed, not so much tonight, but I'd like to have it discussed at the next committee of a whole, to make sure that we are designating a newspaper that's a legal publication in the city. If people are not aware, the city has changed now to once a week, and it's called more of a news magazine. And as of today, they are listed on the Secretary of State's website as a legal newspaper as of today. But one of the things in making sure that I was ready for tonight, the League of Minnesota Cities puts out a Minnesota statute 331A.02 that a legal newspaper has to follow in the state to be a legal newspaper, to be designated by our city. And so what I'd like to do, there's numerous things in this that I'm not aware of tonight. If the Daily Journal is still fulfilling them, I would like to either have the publisher or someone from the Daily Journal be able to address this at the next committee of a whole to make sure 100% that we're doing the right thing as a city and keeping them as our newspaper and not messing up somewhere along the way with this. Some of the things about a legal newspaper is going from a daily newspaper, which the Daily Journal was called, down to a weekly newspaper and the amount of things that are published in that newspaper. So this is more of a housekeeping issue for me, Your Honor, to make sure that we don't ever overstep on something that should be just a normal thing to be done. So, nothing tonight. I would just like to see it brought up at the committee of the whole before I get a chance to vote in favor of this.
Question to council, do we have to vote on this this evening or can we wait for the next meeting?
The only publications that we would have would be if you're passing an ordinance at this point, so you're not passing any ordinances tonight. So, yeah, this can certainly be tabled to either the committee of the whole, but I would probably have it discussed at the committee of the whole and then placed on the consent agenda at the following meeting, if that's acceptable.
Would you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to that.
Second.
Thank you Mike. Thank you Al. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, hearing nothing, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is ordinance and resolutions, and there are none this evening. The next item is presentation of claims in the amount of $2,025,972.21. We have a motion or a resolution to pay those? Resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, pay the bills.
Thank you Jim. Do we have a sec?
I can second it.
Thank you Laurel. Any questions?
Question.
Thank you.
Just under Anderson land surveying, November golf course land surveying, was that $5,500? Was that for the surveying of Pebble Beach from the, from the golf course, or which one was that?
Separating that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think, Your Honor, I think it was everything on the lake side of the road, I believe. It wasn't just Pebble Beach. It was the old shooting club and everything, was it not?
Yes.
Everything on that side of the, on the lake side of the road was.
No other questions?
Mayor Hicks, I want to express my appreciation to Bill and his staff for replying to my questions on some of the larger items here for clarifications, just for my information. Thank you Bill.
Thank you. With that, hearing no more questions, we'll do a roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is an update on the aquatic center. And I will call upon Brian Yvaro, a city engineer. We can do it at the committee of the whole, or Brian can best describe them, which would be interesting.
Yeah, if it's all right with you, Your Honor, yes, I guess I did have a lot of pictures to show the interior, which is very impressive and that, so that's part of.
Can we place, at least place the pictures on our website, maybe after the meeting, at least?
So I can explain the technical difficulty too. Wasn't that the power outage that?
We had a recent power outage that messed up some of the settings on here, and we actually had one of the things go out. It's just recently been replaced, so we thought it was good to go when we tested it today at once, so.
I can see it right here.
Yeah.
So maybe at least Beverly can give us an update.
Yeah, um, yeah, the pictures were a huge component of, and I don't know. I don't know how I can quite do this to show the state and everything, but we can post them on there. But I did want to show a bunch of the pictures, and one of them first will be an aerial drone video and everything that shows the overall location of where we're at with the project in itself, leading up to this fall. That includes, and perhaps when I'll put these posts, I'll put some little arrows and everything showing the light monitors, the first vessel, which is the shallow entry pool, and then the deep vessel, and some of the remaining concrete that's done. As you know, we started this project in the spring. We were, did have some monsoons, I guess you could say, I call it the spring and everything. However, that really hasn't impacted the schedule. Tradesman Construction, the prime contractor, has done a significant amount in working with them to tighten up the schedule and everything to get to a point where we're at right now. And some of the other pictures too, I'll have of the interior as well. You will see some of the light monitors and the furnishings in there. And currently, right now, the subcontractors are building all the interior partition walls, CMU. They're at, one of the pictures, this is dated one, however, about 95% of those interior walls are completed at this time for all the changing facilities. Right now, we're working on cleaning and sealing the interior block, but what work is progressing on the project as anticipated interior. So now, as we move on, is what we're going to be seeing actively through the winter, we're going to see some metal coping on the roof, masonry wall washing that I mentioned. Once that is completed and sealed, we're going to be, the plumbers are going to be doing all the plumbing fixtures and electrical and all the toilets, everything associated with the project. The plan is to have the interior 95% cleaned, if not 99, prior to springtime and everything, so we're doing some final cleaning. And essentially, once we move on, as you can see, we got some exterior concrete, basically from the aquatic center to Randolph Avenue. That has to be completed, sun shades, the completion of the pool sides itself, and then pool plastering. All those vessels of the pools and everything have to be plastered and completed. But we anticipate with good weather and everything, as weather holds up and everything, we're anticipating an opening or turnover to the city just prior to Memorial Day with hopefully an opening just after Memorial Day of 2025. Regards to budget, the budget is looking very well in this project. There are small contingencies, but we have overwhelming, large majority of contingency remaining on this project, and it's predicted that we will still remain that now that we're above ground, as we say. So, at this time, like I said, I will update some of these photos, put them on the website and everything, open up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Brian? So you could do a soft opening?
I guess.
Your Honor, one question. Who is setting, what group is charged with setting the fee structure for that, and what is the status of that?
So operationally, we're looking at other pools in the area, what they charge. And so we'll be, we're going to start meeting regularly to try to develop all our operational plans. And you'll see ads for lifeguards and a pool manager coming up soon to try to get some staff lined up.
So that would come under, obviously, park and rec then?
Yes.
Park and rec.
Anthony.
Go on Scott.
Okay. Brian, at the bottom of the hill of, as it gets down to the, what you would call the sliding hill, I guess.
Yep.
There's a retention pond area excavated down there, and there's culverts and work that was done down there. Some of the retention ponds around town are fenced, some Some of the retention ponds around town are fenced, some are not. Is there an intention for that one to be fenced or not?
The intention of this pond, no. Councilmember Quamie, the intention was no. It's a very shallow pond, it's not a deep, with, it has a permanent pool volume. This is supposed to be more of a dry pond, filtration pond on it, as you can see, and that's why we wanted to maintain operations of sliding and everything, just not right now. We do have some markers up and everything, it's almost completed and everything, but the intent was to have a shallow filtration pond, stormwater, so...
Thank you.
Jim, you have a question?
Will we still have lifeguards at the beach, besides having lifeguards at the pool?
That's not our intent.
Okay. So you swim at the beach at your own risk?
Right.
Any other questions for Brian? With that, we will move on to new business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. The first part of the next section is the motion to appoint the 2025 acting mayor. Do we have any nominations?
Your Honor, I'll make that motion. I'll nominate Laura Jobe.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations?
Let's close her up.
With that...
I love when I get that look.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. Well done, Laura.
Thank you.
The next item is the motion approving the 2025 mayor's council appointments, and they are listed in your packet, but we can read them for the benefit of all. Board of Equalization would be Ward 1, Jim Fish. Ward 2 is Mark Leighton. Ward 3 is Al Cramier. Ward 4 is Laurel Kildy. The Board of Equalization is a committee, it's basically about two hours every year, where if anybody has a question or appeal for their property tax, they do that through the county and any properties that are in the city. They get to obviously have a board that will look at that and either agree or disagree with the county's findings. The second was Business Development for Fergus Falls, and appointed Scott Rachels. That is a board that meets monthly to discuss loans and the city loan pool, and make loans to businesses. Fire Department Relief Association is Laurel Kildy, and obviously they work with the fire department on some of their funds. The Fire Department Trust Fund, Scott Quamie, and again, that's working, I think mainly with their pensions and their trust. The Gulf Board, Mark Leighton, and we've always had a representative on the Gulf Board, and they meet, I believe, monthly. The Investment Committee is Scott Quamie, and they look after, with Kildy, the funds that are in an investment for the city. Legislative Committee, Jim Fish and Scott Rachels, work obviously with our consultant in any projects that the city brings forward that we want to take to St. Paul and try to get support for. The Personnel Committee, Laurel Kildy and Al Cramier. Personnel is probably the largest portion of funding for the city, or cost of the city. The Senior Citizens, Al Cramier, obviously, as the city, senior citizens are important to the city, and I felt that Al was in a very good place to meet with those people. The Tax Levy Committee, because of Al's age.
Thank you for clarifying that.
The Tax Levy Committee will continue with Laura Jobe and Mike Mortenson. Their goal there was to have continuity from this year, and build obviously something for next year, so that more council members have exposure to that, and we can rotate them out. Visit Fergus Falls, Laura Jobe, partly because after the presentation by Rolando, it became apparent that the bulk, the bulk of the sitting council members at that point in time did not understand that word of what he was saying about the internet reactions, and so, other than Laura...
Laura is the one that should know that. She's very good at that.
Yeah, so hopefully that will bring back some fruitful things to the council, where we can promote Fergus Falls. West Central Initiative, Economic Development District, Mark Leighton. Mark, obviously, is pro-business, and will look at what areas where we can work with them on moving things forward. The HRA, Scott Rachels, the city obviously does a levy towards building a fund for housing that is distributed by HRA, supporting people that are struggling with their rental payments. Then the Port Authority typically obviously has, it's a seven-person committee, and in tradition, at this point in time, we've just rotated out the serving president, which was Scott Rachels, and then all remaining council members would remain on the Port Authority. And they will, they obviously will meet, I believe, is it the first meeting of the Port Authority?
It's the third Monday.
The third Monday of, so it will, at the same time as the next council meeting or after it. And they will obviously elect their own officers during that meeting. So those are my recommendations for appointments, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Jim, thank you, Jim. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is an update on the mall ownership, and maybe I can just call upon our city administrator, Andrew, given a little update on the extension that has been agreed upon.
Yeah, happy to. Thank you, Your Honor, council members. At the last meeting, December 16th, it was voted by the council to seek a 120-day extension to the purchase agreement, and we were able to secure that with the seller, so we do have a 120-day extension. I think that went from the day after, so it brings us to a new closing date of April 15th, 2025. And then I also wanted to mention that, as part of that extension, the seller did request that we add a 30-day cancellation clause within that amendment to the purchase agreement. Basically, either party with a 30-day notice can provide their desire to get out of that agreement, and they have the ability to do so. The seller thought that was important in the event that there were other, you know, opportunities that arose, and certainly not problematic with us, because if, you know, if push comes to shove, we can make a decision within that time period. So, that's where we're at today on that, and that kind of leads us into the next piece here, with our continued and ongoing due diligence, Mayor Hicks has suggested a creation of a task force, just to keep things moving, and further dive into certain portions of the purchase agreement that we have in place. And he has brought forward the following names. Councilmembers Kildy and Mortenson, Mayor Hicks, and then myself to serve on this task force. The intent is to work closely with Ottertail County, to learn more about the implications of the CDA, if they were to operate in Fergus Falls, but also to work with the county and look at potential future uses for the property, and identifying some of those things as we move forward with this. Beyond that, more immediately, looking at the separation of utilities for the existing businesses, and identifying a plan for that, as that's important, one way or another. And then finally, looking at if there's other funding opportunities out there beyond the deed grant that we talked about at length at our last meeting. So, the request tonight of the council is to approve and appoint this task force. Again, councilmembers Kildy and Mortenson, Mayor Hicks and myself, with the intent that that group works on this, and then brings back information to the council for action at a future meeting.
Your Honor, one question on that. We, I know at previous closed meetings and things, Commissioner Rognes has been involved in this process. Is this something with Commissioner Sullivan coming on to represent this area, and the majority of our constituents in the city of Fergus Falls, that he would have a role in this as well?
From my, from my understanding, that I believe that once Commissioner Sullivan is sworn in, he will be on the county CDA, so therefore I think he would be in the same position as Commissioner Rognes was in attending, and especially obviously with the involvement of the county in this project.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Al.
Mayor?
You got a question? Oh, I just thought, I thought you saw your hands like that.
Mayor, you have a question? Just, just a kind of a statement. I know that there's the group that is going to be kind of spearheading this, but I think too, it would be nice, and this probably isn't, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or not, but I would like to see the whole council, along with the players out at the mall, get together and tour, and see exactly, so there's absolutely no misunderstanding of what it looks like, of what is out there, actually what is, has power to it, what has water to it, and what are the circumstances? I think we should all be aware of that, so we don't have any misunderstandings, I think that's a good word, as we try to move forward. And this is about moving forward, and I think we all have to be on the same page. So I would like to see that happen in the near future, if we can get all get together, and basically have a field trip, and look at this. Thank you.
Can you define what you mean by players? I mean, who do you put in the bucket? Who do you put in the bucket of players?
Well, I think, I think as far as the players are the ones that are responsible of those four businesses, decision makers on, at those four businesses. And because there, then they can actually talk to us and have questions. I suppose that maybe constitutes a meeting, and if that's an issue, how do we get around it?
The way, the way we address that is you go out in groups of four.
Okay.
So we'd have to set up two dates?
And that would be fine.
Or morning and afternoon.
Or call a meeting, and go out and ask.
Yep.
And then allow the public to come with.
Sure.
But there may be liabilities issues with the mall by having invited the public.
Yeah, that's, I was going to suggest, I'm guessing the seller wouldn't be comfortable with the general public and the media being part of that, so we'll court, we can coordinate two or three different groups on one day and line that up.
I think that'd be great. Thank you.
That can be your first agenda on your tax for, tax, whatever.
Task force?
Task force.
Task force.
The goal of the task force is to keep this thing moving, get answers, bring them back to the council as a whole, and so that we can move, we can move forward in terms of finding a role and a purpose for the mall, so...
And I would like to make mention too, the 100-day, 120-day extension was not to try to derail this decision, or this, this, this option of purchasing the mall. What it has to do is gaining information, so we can make the best decision for the people. Thank you.
With that, I believe we have a motion on the floor to appoint members to the task force. Would somebody care to offer that? Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Yeah, Scott and Al did it. Thank you. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want a roll call, Ellen? No?
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity, you know, to, for council members to describe their priorities and goals for the next two to four years. Asked if they could condense that to three bullet points, five at the most, and the purpose as much as anything is to try to help build an agenda for the retreat on those items and areas that we can find commonality from each council member. So, I have not necessarily depicted any order, so maybe we can just start with Mark at the far end, and end with Al at the other end. So, if you can take, you know, five minutes to describe what you see as your priority. Up to five minutes?
Fifteen seconds, so you guys go ahead.
With that, Mark, the floor is yours.
I'm going to take Laura Jobe's five minutes too, because she's got a cold. First of all, I want, first of all, I want to thank all the volunteers in Ward 2 for your support. The last election, we won this one. It's been a long drive. Also want to thank my wife and my family for understanding my patriotism to fix one city. I think at the last election across the nation, we found that it's a liberalization of America. The majority are now going to control our destiny. My message hasn't changed over the last four years. The only thing I could add to it is that currently we're in probably one of the worst economic times I've lived in, probably the second worst I've lived in. You can see what minimum wage over the last 20 years has done to the labor market. Government inflation may be at 3%, but it's more like 10%. Overregulation by governments, both locally and nationally. Inflation's running at the speed of light. In 2008, a normal median house was 196,000, your payment was 1,100. Today, that median house is 431,000, and your payment is 2,800. While those explosive inflations haven't kept up with your 3% and 4% increase in income. Likewise, real estate taxes, as we know on Fergus Falls, vehicles used to be worth 45, now they're worth 80. Obviously, we all are aware of our grocery costs, so here's my solutions. We're going to cut city spending, we're going to reduce costly regulations and fees, we're going to primarily focus on the existing business and light industry that we have. We have to strengthen that foundation. I will work hard with Mortenson on economic development and establish a goal. In addition to some of these store closings, theft is a big deal, and I'm going to work with chief. As I've always indicated, the fundamentals of a city are obviously police, fire, water, sewer, storm and streets. Some cities have expanded that. Fergus has got an airport, golf course, liquor sales, Power Alex got Power and Light, and we have a Port Authority. We're going to fund, budget fundamentally on the needs, not the wants, and we're going to bring this to the public in full transparency. There's no longer going to be misinformation, that's going to be digested thoroughly in the meeting of the hall, and will be brought in front of the public. I hope that the meeting of the hall, at least one meeting of the hall would be at Wednesday's at 5:30, which would then allow more ease for the public to come. Once that meeting of the hall was complete, then it would probably turn into a town hall meeting, where people could talk and visit. There's a great deal of things to change in the council with the layout of the packet, and they will be developed. I'm honored to be here, I'm honored to represent the taxpayers of Fergus Falls. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Bob. Scott?
Thank you. Happy to have an opportunity to talk about what's important to me, and what I think might be important to you. And to take just a minute at the beginning of my comments, I wanted to recognize someone that was very important in the development of our city over the last 40 years, who died just a week ago, not so long ago, Bruce Thome, a name that many of you wouldn't remember. He handed out these buttons that say Fergus Falls, yes, at the kickoff for the Greater Fergus Falls, about five years ago, and had everybody sing along with a song that he was wanting everybody to sing, a very enthusiastic, upbeat personality. was wanting everybody to sing, a very enthusiastic upbeat personality, remembered for his work years ago on Project 500 and as the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. He was a businessman and a consultant with his linen business and his associate, Tom Holman Associates Consulting Business. Most recently was the owner and president of the Fargo Redhawks for quite a long time. And I think that it was just important to remember him today and his family. The funeral's coming up here real soon, up in Fargo. As far as priorities go, for me, the priority that brought me to the council in the first place years ago was the Regional Treatment Center. And we've got a terrific asset there, in my opinion, that has terrific economic development potential, can also address our housing needs, and I've spoken about that a number of times. The council as a whole hasn't really had the will to tackle it in recent years, and I'd like to see some action to get that moving along with some proactive work to see something happen with the RTC. So that'd be my first one. The second one is kind of a two-part, and that would be just in the general group of communication. Mark had mentioned town halls, for example, and I think that we could improve the things that we've done for communication. I think that there's been some evidence over this last year in particular with the school district, how trying to get information to people and trying to get information from people, we, we can do a better job. And some kind of focused listening sessions, whether the town halls, whether there's adjustments to how we handle our open forums, I think that I'd like to see some work on communication just in general. The fourth and fifth things are kind of quick. The fourth one, I wasn't planning this, Lynn, I really wasn't, but it was the technology in this chamber. You probably saw that one coming, but there's opportunities to improve. I mean, we've got people that expect to be able to do Zoom calls in their business meetings and things now, and to try and do Zoom calls and still be able to stream our meetings and stuff, we just, we're, we're limited, and we haven't got the, we haven't got that technology together. There's been issues with the sound, there's been issues with other things, and I'd like to see that addressed. And the last thing is pickleball. That's the fastest growing sport in the country, and we're doing some things to improve it. We've got a new court that'll be opening up in Broadway Park next spring, and that might not be enough. We might look, as I have suggested, at working on our outdoor hockey rinks. You can get as many as five or six of pickleball courts in, in a hockey rink, so that might be something that we can look to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. As long as you're not necessarily suggesting a council team. Laura?
Thank you. Well, as we embark on the next few years, I am excited about the opportunities ahead and remain committed to supporting the growth and prosperity of Fergus Falls. So over the next two years, my focus will be on driving economic development and creating an environment where businesses, both existing and new, can succeed. Supporting our current businesses is a top priority. In today's rapidly changing economy, we need to be more proactive in identifying ways that the city can help local businesses adapt and grow, whether it's through streamlined processes, enhanced collaboration, or tailored city support. My goal is to ensure that our business community feels valued and empowered to succeed. Attracting new industry is gonna be essential for our city's long-term growth. To make Fergus Falls more competitive, we must prioritize the development of shovel-ready sites and infrastructure to position ourselves as a welcoming destination for industries looking to expand or relocate. That's gonna require some strategic planning and an investment to ensure we are prepared to seize new opportunities that align with our community's vision. Internally, I want to continue focusing on efficiency and ensuring that our city operates effectively as possible. I've had the privilege of sitting on the tax levy committee for the past two years, and as I enter my third, I remain dedicated to finding cost-saving measures and innovative approaches to reduce the tax burden on our residents while maintaining high-quality services.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I've been here a little while. And there's a few things that I, I want to see happen yet, and a couple reasons why I ran again. I don't know how many of you know, but I've been on the council 35 years. This will be 39 when I get done this time. And I actually took my signs, and I took all the metal out of the signs and threw it out at the dump ground and put my signs in the garbage. This will be my last time.
You said that before.
Yes, I have said it before. But I'm cheap, I don't want to buy new signs, so. I really enjoyed working with the city, and I've worked with a lot, a lot of different city employees through the years, a lot of different mayors, and, and I enjoyed my whole time here. A couple, three things that, that I actually ran again on was, was seeing D Lagoon taken care of, not completed, the swimming pool, and, and the newest item out there is the sale of the golf course, and putting that all together. So it makes sense to do what we do, whether it's the sale of the golf course, or whether we continue having the Gulf Board run the course. There's a lot of work to be done on all of that. I'm enthusiastic with the new council. I really am. You've got all the old ideas here. We got all these new people on the council now with new ideas, and I, I want to be included in helping to make those new ideas work. I was, I was, I actually got on the council when we were building the burner out at the...
At the RTC?
I was on the council when we tore the blasted thing down, too. And we're told that, oh, don't worry about it, everything will be fine, you just take and get rid of it, and yeah, that's not how it ended up. We spent a lot more money getting rid of it than, than what we spent building it, but it's, I've enjoyed my time, and I will continue to enjoy my time, and I will continue to work for you, the people, because that's what it's all about. You elected me to help run the city, and that's where I'm at. I will be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Laurel?
Well, I echo most, if not all, of what the other council members have said, and so I hope this isn't too repetitive, and I, like Laura, am a processor, and so I wrote something as well. The first thing that I would like to prioritize as a council group is the hope from the perspective of a new member, that we can all start with a clean slate from this night forward as a new council, and work together with our staff, where we recognize that we're not all gonna agree on everything, but if we approach each topic with respect for each other, under the leadership of our new mayor, we're able to function diligently and cohesively as a group, with open minds, respect and dignity in this chamber and beyond. And it is the sense that many in our community, I think, that there are different factions of government working against each other, and that hopefully we can erase that feeling by positive steps that we take together for our community as a whole, and that we have productive discussion that they can witness, and more opportunity for town halls returning, like Councilmember Kwame stated. Looking at initiatives that I would like to see the council concentrate on, I, like others, feel we must work to continue to accelerate maintenance of our infrastructure throughout the community, specifically as it relates to our roads. We have over 120 miles of paved roads in Fergus Falls. Many of them are in dire need of repair. Our approach to this work needs to be aggressive without putting more burden on our taxpayers, and hopefully we can find a way to do that with avoiding a franchise fee for our taxpayers. Growing our tax base is the best way to provide for this, and thus, that must be one of our priorities. I recognize there's not a magic wand that brings business growth overnight. Overarching, community-based economic development is vitally important to our future as a community. As a council, I hope that we will concentrate on business growth and the attraction side of that spectrum to grow our tax base, while we must also support other entities that are tackling accompanying factors such as daycare shortage. We need to be business-friendly for founders and companies that want to locate in Fergus Falls, but it's equally important to be successful in economic development to also prioritize supporting our existing businesses, like Laura referenced. We must be willing to use all of the tools in economic development as appropriate that we have at our disposal. We also need to think outside the box to be effective in economic development, and we need to network with those that aren't necessarily players in that right now, not only in the city of Fergus Falls, but in our region. I think as council members, we all need to use our contacts and, and lean on others to help us with this, because we can't do that alone. I'd also like to see the staff and the council work together to spend more purposeful energy seeking and analyzing potential outside funding sources, such as grants, that fit for the city of Fergus Falls, so we can also use those monies to do more things without being a burden to our taxes. My next priority would be, maybe one of the most important, is I believe we must take a deep dive into our ordinances to look at zoning and the function side of our ordinances to make things current, relevant, pertinent, and realistic. My experience on Planning Commission is Clara has worked really, really hard, and, but we have a lot of work to do in zoning and ordinances to get things updated. I'd like to see us to be able to do things like allow in-law suites, so families can care for their aging elderly family members in their homes, without going through a lot of red tape to be able to do that. This would allow more people to invest in their property and also grow our tax base. Finally, and I'll be brief, we need to support our fine police and fire departments. We have a fully staffed police department, which many departments in our area don't have, and that's been done through recruitment, both locally and in our region, and we need to concentrate on making sure that that continues, so they can be fully staffed. We have three second-generation firefighters right now, and I think keeping morale up in that group and fully supporting our police and our fire is gonna be really important as we go forward. So I look forward to working together to work on those things.
Thank you, Paul.
We should have talked about...
He said five minutes.
No. I was surprised to see that we got Laura before we start talking about roads, and, and we've, the past couple of years with our tax levy was really one of the most, probably talked about, trying to figure out how we're gonna do this road thing, and the franchise fee didn't, didn't fly, and we already, I think Brian, you make, we're two years ahead on our state funding, is that true? I don't mean to put you in a spot, but I think we're ahead a little bit. We've used up some, but roads are the number one P thing when we got, when we, when I was elected. We didn't do much in the last two years. They're not gonna fix themselves, and they do cost money, and the longer we take, the more money it's gonna cost to fix them. And I'm not in favor of franchise fee, I think I'd probably pay more than anybody else in the council, but it is what it is. Or some way, we got, the money's gotta come, the road, the money's gotta come from someplace, and the roads belong to us, not the council, us as a city. And we use them, and we have to pay for them, and I hate it, but we pushed this thing down the road. I've been on here for 12 years, and I, or 10 years, and we haven't really done, we've done a few good projects, but we have a five-year plan bill that we put together that we need to kind of look at and get that in place, and get going at, and we can, it's aggressive, and we can get it done sooner than later, I believe. Economic development, everybody talks about economic development, that's what everybody has, and, and I'm, I've been involved with economic development since I've been on here the last two years, and we had a real hit back at the last meeting, and we have to fix that. We have to figure out what we're gonna do and how we're gonna be, because right now, we're not looked at as a development place for people to come here and develop, but just because of our attitudes, and we have to, it's all our attitudes. It's not just the people we've talked about, it's our whole, the whole council is in on this. And so that's my, one of my biggest things, we need to really remedy and get that, get us on the better side of economic development, because right now, we're not on that good side. We're, we're not gonna have people come here and spend money until we figure out our attitude, what we're gonna have when they walk in the door. First thing that we talked, we had a meeting at Greater Fergus Falls, was one of developers says, he says, the place I go, I walk in the door, and I said, what can we do for you? And we don't have that, we don't have that here yet. We can, but we don't have it now, so. With that, I'm just gonna, I didn't say it was gonna be that long, and I was, Mr. Mortensen's got a long list of stuff that seems, so have at her.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Rachel. Thank you, Your Honor. First thing I want to say, Anthony, is this is, this was unexpected to have this tonight, for you to, to let us go out and speak and do this and, and be able to do it. And I tell you what, I've been around leadership in a lot of different ways, whether it's military, business, different things. It was outstanding to let every council member do that tonight, so I appreciate that a lot coming out of you. I'm gonna thank the Third Ward for electing me, not only in the special election, but in the regular election, and I am prepared to do everything I can for this city. I am not sitting here tonight to be called a council member, I'm not sitting here tonight to have any prestige or distinguished part in this city. I'm sitting here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to bring business to this community, and that's it. That's number one. And so I'm gonna do everything I can. It's all about business for me, it's all about changing the economic climate that Mr. Rachel's just talked about, to make this a climate where when people look at Fergus Falls, they look at we're the place to come, not the place to avoid. And that will come with a lot of different changes that are gonna occur. I talked the other night about what's called the right principle, and one of the things that this city has to start looking at is retail, R, I, industry, growth, hiring and tax expansion. If we don't go down this route, we're gonna get left behind, which we already are. So this is very important to me. I have a lot of other businesses, a lot of other careers, a lot of other things. I am here to do this for my city, and you'll hear later on the length of time I've lived here. I've been visiting ever since the day I was elected back in November with economic developers throughout the region, and I've had, one of the things that I just want to say, and this is nothing against any development we've done at this part, I, I am nervous. I, I am shocked at where our city is at for economic development at this point. It's actually scary, and that's gotta change. And so one of the things that we're gonna do is we're not gonna rely on some of the, the things that we have at this point. What we're gonna do is we're gonna change the way we look at economic development, and we're gonna bring it back in-house to this city if we can. We're gonna have, where we're involved with economic development to a level that I think this city has never seen before, and we're gonna have an economic development group that's gonna push far outside of this area where we're at. When I met with some of the other economic developers around the, the region, they push out to Nebraska, they push out to Oklahoma, they push out to Illinois, they push out way out to try to bring things into their community, and I think what we can do is we can work with some of them to even grow our community more. They're ready to partner with us, other communities, for the things that they can't utilize so we can. But this is it for me. This is it. I've told everybody when I walked the Third Ward, if I can't change the economic development climate in this city in four years, I won't be back to be on this council, not at all. That's the only thing that I'm here for. We're gonna run, in my opinion, this business, or this city will be run more like a business. We're gonna make money in this city, we're not gonna lose it or give it away. This city needs as much revenue as it can generate, so we can prosper, we can do the roads, we can increase our tax base, so we can flourish, so we can be there for businesses when they need it. I don't even know today, if we had a business come in that wanted it, could we give them a million dollars? Could we give them four million? Other communities can, and that's where we've got to get to, and that's priority number one. I look at every single asset that the city has, whether we sold a property the other day, or whether we're getting ready to, to do something with a property, as your assets. This is your business assets, and those assets are gonna generate something for us in this community that brings back to us, so we can grow. This is, this is the whole way about it. There's also gonna be a play, a fair playing field in this community. Everyone's gonna get a shot at economic development, and that's, that's paramount for us. One of the other things that's come up recently, and, and I didn't come on the council for this, but I want to make sure that the department heads in this city are treating their employees with dignity and respect. It's very important that I want every city employee that doesn't come in this room, that's on the plow truck, that's shoveling the sidewalk, that's working in other areas of the city, to have a safe atmosphere where you go to work. I promise you that I will make that happen for you on the council. I have been in situations where, in a business standpoint, where people have been a hostile work environment, harassing, and it steals your soul, and I won't allow that for any city employees, so that's important to me. The last thing I want you to know is I'm proud of this city. I wouldn't come up here and be on the council if I wasn't. The last thing I want you to know is I'm proud of this city. I wouldn't come up here and be on the council if I wasn't. I want us to be the city that everybody talks about. I don't want people to say, hey, Alec, hey, Detroit Lakes, hey, this. I want them to say Fergus Falls and it's it's in the it's in my soul. It's very important. I want you to know my grandfather came here in the 1800s. He plowed these streets that are right outside of us. My grandmother was born here, my mother was born here. I was born two blocks away from here. I was baptized three blocks away from City Hall, confirmed three blocks the other direction. And I was married two blocks away from this city hall. I played here, I grew up here, I went to school here and I returned here after my time in the Marine Corps. And it's my roots run deep and it is paramount that I helped my city at this time. I've spent my life going to school. I've spent my life being a businessman. I've spent my life on what it means to generate money and generate business growth in this city and that's all I'm here to do. And I hope that that's enough for us and I appreciate your time.
Bring it home, Al.
Mike, that was fantastic. And Laurel, I was nervous when I saw how many pages you had over there. That was a remarkable statement made by this council person. He's my neighbor, my friend. I've known him for many years. And someone's word is very important. We just hired a new person at my place of work. This fellow came from New York City. My exact words were to him, what are you thinking? And he moved here during the winter. He says, you know, I wanted to live someplace that was called Otter Tail County. I again grew up in this in this city. 1967, I moved here with my family. We were all very active in different things in the city, in school. I'm very proud of my mother and father and my two brothers. As time goes on, you realize that, you know, Fergus is a great city. And I still remember four years ago, and it's nice that the Wagnalls are sitting here tonight. They had a meet and greet the candidates four years ago. At Fergus Brewing. And I still remember what I said then, and I don't know if you guys remember or not. But I said, you know. When you talk about Brainerd, it's a gateway to the lakes. We have a thousand lakes in this county. And just west of here, we have the prairie. We have two complete great ecosystems here that are going to draw people, draw people here. So we have things that Fargo doesn't have. Fargo has things that we don't have. But if we can work different things out regionally here. If we get some connection, as Mike had spoke about earlier. That's how we win, you guys. I'm passionate about my city. I've got to know many, many people throughout my years here. And. I am passionate and like I've always said, please don't mistake passion for anger. Because I can get pretty passionate about things. And my goal here is economic growth. And this started. Well, it was a year ago in October that we had visited. In Bemidji, spoke to the economic group there. With some different people. You know, we need to work together. Let's not make something we're not. We can have these other companies that want to come here. For example, Delta Dental, they came out of the cities to go to Bemidji. When they first solicited them. They said, yeah, we'll go up there. And after they were there, they realized, hey, this is a place we want to be. We've got that here. We've got that here. So I think I am 100%. With Mike Mortenson on this and the others, and I think we're all going to be together here. But what I told the Wagnalls was four years ago. Or excuse me, two years ago. Was that did you ever think that you'd be hosting a meet and greet debate type thing? At Fergus Brewing that you own? All things are possible. You know, I think that's great. And I applaud you for that. For making that happen for our community. And I applaud everyone else who followed in suit too. But we also need new blood, new ideas that I know is out there because I've talked to people. If there's anything that any council member hears of any type of talk of I want to be here. I'm looking at maybe putting in some type of a business. We need to jump on that right now. As far as different things as as you know, roads and infrastructure, yeah, we got to have it. It's time to fix it. But not with a franchise tax. So I'm very glad that did not go through because there's other ways to get this money. We have to make careful decisions, very careful decisions on what road to fix. Where you're going to put a roundabout, where the money's going to go because there are other areas, other roads that are worse than others that need it first. As far as TIF. I said two years ago. That I would not be interested in providing TIF for housing. I would be providing TIF for any business. With certain numbers of employees to bring into this city. The for an example, the apartment building that was going to be built on the Checker site. That was 27 years of TIF money that they were going to get. That's unbelievable. I'll be long dead by then. And maybe some of you will be very happy about that. I don't know. Anyway. That is something that we have to realize that this is taxpayer money. That's a lot of money. As far as most recently, I don't believe TIF should be used as a purchase option. TIF was used for that apartment building those years ago to get that apartment building built, not to sell it to another owner. So that's what I really think about TIF. I think it has its place. I think it needs some accountability in our city. Because there's a lot of money that goes out. And I really want to get look at those guidelines for it even closer. I think as far as economic groups, there has been talk of that lately. I would like to try and look at options that are out there. Because it doesn't seem. That what we're trying to do is bringing in enough tax base. To cover our average citizen. You know, everybody has a future. My goal also is to listen to everyone like I had said in my campaign two years ago. From a senior citizen to a young family. Like I said, everyone has a future. Everyone. I don't care how old you are. If you are breathing air, you have a future. And I've talked to people that they were scared of losing their house, who were senior citizens. Who was afraid of losing their house because of some decisions that have been made by our city. I don't want that to happen for these people. They have worked hard their life. They have pride and ownership of their house and their neighborhood. We need to keep this going. And as far as that goes, we all all have a future. Because she was afraid of losing her house because she can't afford the taxes anymore. That's not fair. That is not fair. Maybe that's why I'm on the senior committee, Mayor. I don't know. But I've been around the senior people for 39 years in my work. And if they're senior or if they're young, I will fight for them. Because that is the trust they have put into me. I get called almost daily of different things that happen and come up. By citizens and I thank them for that and they are very welcome to call me anytime. I'm always very accessible. I'm a 24/7 kind of guy. And believe me, I get calls pretty late at night from people. So I appreciate this opportunity to speak, Mayor. I know I went too long and Laurel, your notes looked small compared to mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank you all for kind of indulging me as well on kind of giving giving us insight as to what you're looking at. That will obviously help us formulate an agenda and I think we've got food for thought on many of those things. And I concur with many of the things that obviously been said this evening in terms of how we move our city forward. But I can have just a couple of well, not a couple of words, but a few words equally. That would like to just give me the indulgence of some time. But I think, you know, the first thing is that, you know, we must all remember that trust is earned. It's not just granted. And you know, as we serve, you know, the public and and serve with each other, you know, that we have to kind of earn that trust. So I think that's something to bear in mind in everything we do, not only just in these chambers. But outside of the chambers as well, you know, we are public figures now. And whatever we do, we will always be looked upon as being a public figure. I think, you know, transparency, you know, is is something that, you know, which comes back to, I think, something the council. While we were saying about communications, we've definitely passed through a period where we've seen some strong differences of opinion. And we need to allow, you know, everyone has a voice. And even though we don't necessarily agree with that particular viewpoint, we still should listen. And you know, the adage is that we have two ears and one mouth. And so, you know, that's one way that we can help with transparency. And likewise, obviously, we we need to have mutual respect. Allowing each of us to express our desires and our comments is also respectful. And that will help us gain the trust of each other when we can talk freely about kind of the things where we do see things differently. Ultimately, I'm goal orientated and, you know, that was one of the purposes of this evening was to kind of talk a little bit about goals. So that we can formulate a plan and we can look at how we prioritize the things that have come up tonight. Into a realistic, you know, list of what we can achieve. Rome was not built in a day, so we're not going to change everything just like that. But if we have a list and a plan, then we can get that done. I think, you know, the interesting part about this evening is we have a lot of common goals. And I think, you know, that's, you know, we might not necessarily see how we accomplish those goals the same. But the fact that we have similar goals will help us do that. And again, through discussion, we can find the different paths that we get to do that. And hopefully reach a compromise and and a balance. We as a council, we have a choice. We can either act like they do in Washington and St. Paul. Or we can forge a path forwards of bringing solutions. We've got a lot of issues that do face us every day. But, you know, ultimately, it's it's kind of harder to bring solutions than it is to bring criticism. And we can all criticize what each and every one of us does. But it would be nice ultimately, you know, to to hear people's solutions and not be coy about them. You know, to so that we it's out there. Accountability matters to all of us, you know, whether you're sitting here in a leadership role on council. Or whether you're in the community. And, you know, when you when people come and talk in front of the council, we need to give them the respect as well. And, you know, it takes a lot of courage sometimes to literally stand at the podium and speak. Against a governing body of any description. But it's also would be nice if if people, you know, in that can feel comfortable about bringing a solution. One of the things that we're looking at doing is having, you know, leadership make quarterly presentations of what work they do in their departments. And help the public and the citizens of Fergus Falls understand the roles of of each and every member of the city. I think there's a lot of city staff that just fly under the radar that we never hear about and they are heroes every day. But we need to bring that forward so that people can see who they who they are. And we've got to remember that we're not an island. The whole purpose and reason that there are eight council members and one mayor. Is that, you know, we can share, we can share, you know, problems, the problem shared is a problem halved. You know, if we half that problem, we're more likely to find a solution that will get us to our goal of accomplishing something. We have to remember that we are not lone wolves, that the council is a body of people that collectively have power as a body. They do not have the ability or the power to make decisions as individuals, but only as a body. And we cannot afford to have members that forge singular paths because that leads to confusion. It leads to destruction of the process. And then when this process starts to disintegrate, then resentment builds. And you have negative feelings then about each and every one. And so it kind of comes back to the whole transparency thing. The whole purpose of a group meeting is to have that. It shouldn't be singular voices speaking. It should be a group that talks. And to close, today is January the 6th. And let us all remember what happened four years ago on this day that should never be repeated. And obviously, it's always got to be a Winston Churchill quote. And Winston said once that politics is not a game, it's an earnest business. And I think, you know, you know, we have to listen obviously to what the voters say. And I think, you know, on a closer to home, John F. Kennedy once said, let us not seek the Republican answer or the Democratic answer, but the right answer. Let us not seek to fix blame for the past. Let us accept our responsibilities for the future. And we have a new council and I think, you know, it got said here this evening that the past is the past. And we have to move forward for a brighter future. And city politics is not about party, but more about doing the right thing for our community at large. So let us work together for a common goal of making Fergus Falls an even better place to live and work and play that we have today. The city of Fergus Falls is a great city. I can't attest to being born in a church two doors from here and all of those things. But I have lived here the longest portion of my life that I've ever lived in one place. And, you know, I am happy to call Fergus Falls my home. And I believe that if we work collaboratively, we can achieve and accomplish a lot of things. And we have to also be patient as well. You know, I'm not a meeting meeting person that, you know, I won't call meetings for a meeting sake, but there are times. meetings sake, but there are times, obviously, because of our structure, that we have to meet, but out of those, we have to have decisions, and then we have to have responsibility for coming back with finding solutions to those things that get brought up. You know, Lori Mullin brought up tonight, obviously, about country inn and suites being, you know, sold. That is an opportunity for us as a city to do something positive with the Bigwood Center. So, you know, we need to work on that to get something done. And like a lot of things, time is of the essence for, for many things that we do. Not only, you know, today, the world moves so fast, that if we're not moving with it, then we're being left behind. So I will work hard on, on making many of the things that have got brought up tonight, hopefully, happen. I, I think, you know, I, I want to, you know, there are opportunities in terms of funding. I, I attended a county meeting on potential funding for roads, and I think we have to do more of those things, and we've got to look to St. Paul, and, you know, whether it's Minnesota Deed, or whether it's kind of, you know, the Department of Transport, but there are, there are funds out there that we need to tap into, and I will be honored to go down there and serve the people of Fergus Falls. With that, there is only left the miscellaneous announcements, which January the 15th will be a committee of the whole, and on January the 20th, it will be Martin Luther King Day. So City Hall will be closed, and the garbage that week will be pushed, Mondays will be Tuesdays, Tuesdays will be Wednesday. And then the next item will be the 21st of January for a city council meeting. With that, I would like to ask Al Freyman to say something.
Thank you. I'd also like to, if we could look at, at the committee as a whole meeting, a week from this Wednesday, to kind of dive into that country inn and suites. And I would like to, to discuss some of that during that meeting, if it's not too late. I think that there is a number out there what they want for that, and it would be nice to tie the Bigwood Event Center into that. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.